Call the January 3 meeting of the Board of Supervisors to order. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Are we doing them one at a time? Or do we do both together?
Do you want me to just read it and you say I will? Or do you want to repeat after?
Well, whatever. Whatever, I don't know.
You want to go first or you want?
Go ahead.
I'll just read it. Nice seeing you. All right. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth and that you will discharge the duties of supervisor in Harris Township, Central County with fidelity?
I do.
Congratulations. Once again.
Nice seeing you.
Nice seeing you. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth and that you will discharge the duties of supervisor in Harris Township, Central County with fidelity?
I will.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
You're good. Thank you. You're free for the night. No more.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. It's nice seeing you.
I've only been in your courtroom once.
That's it?
That's it.
And I've been forced to, I've never been in your courtroom.
That's when you made my wife a citizen.
Oh. Now that's exciting.
Yeah.
Sometimes I get to do exciting things. Like this. This is fun.
Okay, we will do a public hearing to begin with. Amy, would you do that ordinance amendment 352, please?
Sure. The state recently passed a new wireless facilities law. The law, which took effect August 29th, limits how a municipality can regulate wireless facilities, particularly small wireless facilities. Small wireless facilities must be permitted in all zoning districts as a permitted use in the public rights of way. These facilities can also be co-located on municipally owned poles. The law also contains shot clock provisions and sets the fees that can be charged by municipalities. While municipalities are not permitted to zone small wireless facilities out of areas, they can establish a design manual for these facilities. Design manuals provide standards for the use of stealth technology to camouflage small wireless facilities. The township contracted with the Cohen Law Group to prepare the necessary amendments to our wireless facilities ordinance, an updated fee schedule, and a design manual. The law firm prepared our original wireless facilities ordinance, so they were very familiar with our current regulations.
Questions from the person?
So, this is what I might say for the people on the Zoom. Our technology is a little lagging tonight, so we can hear you all, and I can see you on my screen, but we can't physically see you in the room. So, if you want to talk, just raise your hand, and I'll make sure that I recognize you and let the board know, so we can hear you.
Let's do that on the content of this. Any citizen comment you have?
No one is raising their hand.
Okay. Motion to adjourn the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Not hearing any, the public hearing is adjourned. Thank you. Okay, approval of minutes of December 13. Motion to approve.
Move the per of the minutes of December 13, public hearing and regular meeting.
Have a second on that, please.
I'll second it.
Discussion? Not hearing any, all in favor, sitting before saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Citizen comment?
Do you have citizen comment, JP?
I do not.
Okay.
We're the public here invited to comment, and any item not on the agenda for five minutes. Anything you want to talk about?
Well, I think, I think we're getting there.
You're fine. Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
I didn't know if I had to.
Not yet. Well, we'll call on you, not yet.
Well, it's dangerous when you're the only one in the room. You have a purpose for being here. New agenda items allows us to add any items that weren't on the agenda. Do any of my colleagues have anything to add to the agenda?
Question. Is Nigel on now?
Nigel is on.
I didn't know if anybody, we announced that, so they knew he was on by Zoom.
Oh, yeah, Nigel is on the Zoom tonight. Nigel, say hello.
Okay. Can you hear me all?
Hi, Nigel.
All right.
No additions on Act 65? Okay, we'll move on. The Township Business Organization of Board of Supervisors. We'll take nominations for chair and vice chair. I would nominate Mr. Lawrence for chair, if he's so inclined.
I accept.
Okay.
And might as well be vice chair.
Who's?
I don't know.
Frank.
Frank, vice chair? Okay.
I get vice as chair.
Entertainer motion, we have a second on those two? Second. Motion is second, all in favor, sitting before saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Thank you, Nigel.
Okay.
We are now ceremoniously moving the gavel.
Thank you, Helen. All right, the next item business for us is interview with prospective members of ABCs. Amy?
So, the first person that is on our list is Rebecca DePodwin from Kestrel Lane. She is interested in serving on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. Ms. DePodwin is an avid nature lover. She's on the Zoom. So, Ms. DePodwin, if you would like to introduce yourself to us, and then the board can ask you any questions.
Hi, good to be here tonight. Only virtually. I've been Harris Township resident for about three and a half years now, and would love to just get involved and learn more and hopefully be able to shape the future of the parks in this beautiful township.
Any questions?
Interesting, come with the Kansas Big Brother Big Sister Program.
Yeah, several years ago.
Kansas, okay. I have no questions.
No, I do.
Anyone else?
Good for me.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
You want to create the procedure then, in terms of how we're going to?
I will when we get through everybody. Okay, so next on our list is Dr. M. Devonish from Torrey Lane. She is interested in serving as the township's representative to the Sklo Center Region Library Board. Dr. Devonish is an attorney, a business consultant, and a professor. She previously volunteered with Reading is Fundamental and Beyond Baroque. So, Dr. Devonish, if you want to introduce yourself?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me at your meeting. I'm really excited to be here and to, you know, to the possibility of becoming a member of the Board of Trustees of the library. I'm an advocate for literacy as well as education. I have been for several years and am looking forward to the opportunity to serve the community.
Was this for the library?
Mm-hmm. If you have any questions.
A most impressive resume.
Thank you.
Don't know enough to ask questions.
I have one that's not on topic, but it's just, what led you to get your PhD from the University of Sydney?
After working as an attorney for several years, I went back to school to get my Masters of Fine Arts in Creative Writing from Carlow University, which I'm sure you all know since it's a Pennsylvania university, and I really loved it. And at my dissertation defense, the committee suggested that I either go to film school or get a PhD in film studies because they thought that my work, my novel read like a screenplay. And I thought, well, these are really esteemed people telling me to do this, so if I could get a scholarship somewhere that I've never been, that I thought would be exciting, and take a break from the law and do it, I would do so. And I was fortunate enough to get an international scholarship for the three and a half years to pursue my PhD at the University of Sydney. So, that's what led me to Sydney. But I'm glad to be back in Pennsylvania and to be near Carlow and to be in this brave community that we all live in.
Well, Sydney is certainly a nice city. I think I've actually been in the university. I've walked by it a few times. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, are we ready to move to the next one? Next is JP Geis, who's actually in the room. So JP, if you want to come up to the microphone. JP is a resident of Derrick Drive. He is interested in serving on the zoning hearing board. Mr. Geis previously volunteered with the Otto's Golf Tournament. Want to go ahead and introduce yourself?
Good evening, everyone. I, my family and I moved from Ferguson Township to Harris Township about two months ago now. Serving in the community, getting involved in the township is always something that I was interested in. And then talking to Amy, I looked on the Facebook page, saw that this position was open, and having little kids, thought this was a nice starter position for the, for the community. And then I just, a way to get my feet wet and get active with the township.
So you've done some work with Clearwater and the golf tournament?
Yep. Yeah, I've been working with them for, I mean, family's been working with them since early 2000s and then been serving on their committee since 2018.
Good.
So that's a, it's a, that's a nice.
Good group.
It's a good, it's a good group, and it's a, it's a great day just to be able to be involved in something like that. And usually it's, in the non-COVID year, it's over $100,000 that we're able to raise for them, and that's a, that's a great feeling.
Anybody else have questions? Nigel, do you have any questions?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm good. I'm good.
Okay. Next up, we have Michael Immel. Michael is the owner of Nittany Meadow Farm. He's interested in serving on the zoning hearing board. Mr. Immel is a farmer and previously served as the Chair of the Union Township Planning Commission and the Mid Center Central County Authority. So, Mr. Immel, if you want to unmute yourselves?
Okay, can you hear me?
We can.
All right. Thank you for entertaining my application. And I just felt it was, after listening to several meetings, listening to the supervisors say that they're always interested in having people help out and didn't have many individuals offering to come and serve on their boards and their committees, that I thought I would take up my civic responsibility and offer myself as a volunteer. I wanted to start slow, and I thought maybe the zoning hearing board would be a good place to start. I have served, as Amy said, in various roles in other townships and other authorities and have quite a bit of experience doing that as well. I am a business owner. I have a couple LLCs, I'm a landlord, and I also operate Nittany Meadow Farm, and I do a lot of historic preservation and have done so in both Central County and Clinton County. And I would be, I'd be honored to be able to help serve in the township.
Questions for Mr. Immel? Anyone?
I guess I would have one. I want to know what your position is on the noise generated from goat yoga on the golf course.
Frank, that's not a real question.
Yeah, I'm the.
That's not a real question.
Well, one of the goat whisperers. They walk around and keep the goats in line and help them entertain the participants.
No problem. Just so you train them to be quiet when I swing.
Okay.
Like it'll make a difference.
We probably won't. It's worth the effort.
Anyone else have questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Immel. Moving on to Chuck Rizzio, Ishler Street. Chuck is interested in serving as an alternate to the planning commission. Mr. Rizzio previously served on the Small Area Plan Committee and is a member of the Village Parking Committee. So Chuck, if you want to unmute yourself? He's unmuted. There you go.
Okay, there we go. Yeah, good evening, everyone. Thanks for this opportunity to address the board. As Amy said, I was previously on the Small Area Plan Committee, which I really enjoy. I learned a lot, both about the township and how it functions and its interactions with other townships. So, I had also volunteered to be on the parking committee, but due to my work schedule, I'm not really sure how well that's going to work out.
Neither either.
So Amy was very kind and reached out to me and suggested that the planning commission alternate might be a better fit. So I am happy to serve in any way that the township needs me.
Sort of interested how successful you were in teaching the kids to juggle.
Oh, no, no, no. I learned to juggle. I didn't.
Oh, you did? Oh, okay. Juggle kids. I'm good. Thank you.
I'm good.
Anyone, Nigel? He's good.
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. And then last but certainly not least, we have Susan Trainer from Andover Drive. Susan is interested in serving as the township's representative to the Sklo Center Region Library Board. Ms. Trainer previously served on the Clarion Free Library Board.
Hi, I'm Sue Trainer. I do live on Andover Drive. I've been here for about 10 years, since I married my spouse, who's been here forever. So, I am interested in the library board. I served on it in my past community, where I lived for 35 years. I wasn't on the library board for 35 years, but sometimes it felt like I'd been there a long time. I was secretary of the board for a while, and I did a variety of things in that community. I'm a, I'm a retired computer science professor, so sometimes my skills were called upon and sometimes ancillary skills were called upon. I was, I served on the university's art gallery board for several years while I was there, and just, just a host of things, whatever career would produce, you know, in terms of service. I've done things like systematically served at a soup kitchen in my last community. Here, I've worked at the local food bank before they changed their setup to now the clients can actually shop, but before, we used to work at night and pack bags and do things like that. I am interested in the library. I am an avid patron of this library, and it's, it's actually a wonderful, wonderful resource in this community. It's, I hope people can appreciate what they, what they have there. I am familiar with some of the things that libraries deal with, certainly not all, but things like funding and patron service. I think that Sklo has done just a marvelous job during the pandemic. They, their service has been really just excellent. They've thought of a lot of things that maybe people wouldn't think of at first blush and, and just done a good job with outreach. I take questions. You know, I'm not a youngster, and I've served on lots of different things, and I, I think this community is rich with resources, not just the library, but the parks and all those things that you offer.
Can you explain what a free library is versus our library? Is there a difference between?
Just a name.
Pardon?
Clarion Free Library is their public library in Clarion, Pennsylvania. Clarion is about an hour from the Ohio border.
They just call it the Clarion Free Library?
That's right. It's their public library.
It's Sklo Free Library.
Same thing.
It's like the food library of Philadelphia.
Yeah, it's like the Philadelphia Free Library.
Public and free.
Okay. I don't know if there was something special about it or?
No, it's a public library.
Okay. Thank you. You'd like to explain our procedures?
Yeah, so what will happen later in the meeting, now that we've all had a chance, the board's had a chance to meet all of you? The board will make a decision. We'll go to executive session here in a couple items, and the board will decide who they're going to put on the committees. You are welcome to stay, and JP's in the room. You're welcome to stay for the whole meeting. Certainly, I will follow up with everybody in the morning to let you know the outcomes. And I will say this, that I've already spoken with some folks, and if we don't have an opportunity for you through the township tonight, I think there are other opportunities for folks to serve, and we will try to find a plug, a way to plug you in because we are so excited to have people that are interested in helping and serving the township. So, you're all welcome to stay on the Zoom. That's totally fine if you want to. But if you also, I understand freely if this is not your bailiwick and you'd like to log off tonight, we will follow up in the morning. And JP, you're welcome to leave as well if you don't want to stay.
And if you don't mind, I have four votes paid at home, so I should go check on, see how that's doing.
Okay.
All right.
I haven't heard of fire trucks. I think you have.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
It's impressive to have six people interested. There are years when we had no one interested in participating. So we thank you for everyone coming out and submitting an application.
You must be doing something wrong.
Yeah.
The, our next item is Resolution 22-01, adopting a new two-year employment agreement with the township manager.
Yeah.
We've already tried to table this, so I guess we should move on.
Yes, you should vote on it.
It didn't work? Keeps coming back?
So.
I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 2201, adopting a new two-year agreement with the township manager.
I, I second that, and I have a question.
I have a question, too.
Where is the voting statute in this?
I don't get a vote.
Oh.
I still don't get a vote.
Forgot about that.
I've never gotten a vote.
And the other, the other question, not a question, but you're, the 1%, two, the extra, that, where does that relate? That's not in our, that's not in our, that's in our deferred compensation program?
Yeah, so we took care of that when you made the last month. Yep, and that's already accounted for, and I've already put my match in.
Okay.
Section 9, either C, if, if, citizens go exam, is that something you just filed?
I had to do that when I first started here. I haven't done it.
It goes down every year?
Nope.
Okay, okay.
I did that 17 years ago.
That was, that was part of the question. Okay. Thank you, Chris.
Anybody else have anything? Okay. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 2201, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay?
Okay, aye.
Okay. You're on for another two years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They're going to stay though.
They're going to age together, right?
Is that a statement, two years?
Yeah.
Sure, no, we're moving. Okay, I, next item is Propose Ordinance 352, amending the township's wireless facilities ordinance, and we have a public hearing on this. So, anything extra to add?
No, just that we pretty much have to do this by law, so.
Like if I had some.
I have a couple of questions.
Well, okay, I'll, I'll, I'll move that we adopted 30, 2202.
I'll second that. 352, I think is the number on this one.
Yeah, 352.
352, yes.
You seconded that?
Yeah, yeah. So, go ahead.
Two questions, a couple of them. Is this common for all municipalities in the Center Region?
Everybody.
Are we doing this as a group?
Yeah, everybody's doing it, and everybody's using, use, I think almost everybody's using the Cohen Law Group. So, we're all going to have a very, we all had similar ordinances to begin with, and they'll all be very similar now.
Any major changes about what we're mending?
It just changed, the law changed because, like, in our old ordinance, for example, we didn't allow small wireless facilities in the village.
Which is new.
And we're not allowed to do that now, but we have stealth.
What was the question on?
What changed, what changed in that?
What changed?
Okay, what was your response first?
The, in our old ordinance, we kept them zoned out of the village zoning district. And we're not allowed to do that now. They changed the law. And so now the law says you can't do that, but you can have a design manual. So that's one of the things Cohen Law Group did for us, was they gave us the design manual. Yep.
That, that was my question. They, they did.
They did the design manual. Yeah, I don't have any, I mean, we don't have any expertise in this in the township, right? This is not in our bailiwick. And then there, they set the fees, the state set the fees, and there's a shot clock associated with when you can, how you have to review them. It, it's basically all prescribed in the state law that was passed.
You mentioned shot clock. I've got to circle to define what a, what shot clock means.
So that means that when Todd gets the permit, he has so many days to take action on the permit or its deemed approval, basically.
There was a comment I've had, the contractor had before, they, they really had, didn't have much mention of RFE or EMF, and I noticed they do now. So it's, they're finally starting to recognize there may be some issues there.
Well, what, what?
Radio frequency emissions. Oh, it's, it's all through here. Well, one of them is on page five, number five, and EM, electromagnetic. I worked with that some time ago, and, and if you work with it enough years, you'll begin to appreciate tinfoil hats. So, so, so I, I am blessed that that's in there, that whether we, whether we know what we get readings are not, are accurate or not, we don't know, but at least there's, there is some concern about that.
Do these exist now in the downtown?
We do not have any small wireless facilities in the township. State college, no. State, not yet. I'm assuming they're going to come at some point. State College Borough has them, Patent Township, Patent Township has them. If you go out to the Colonnade, they're actually on top of some of the light poles out there.
I was going to ask you about the lights that go down Beaver and College. Always have a box-looking structure on top. Is that one of these?
It might be. I mean, Ferguson Township, there, in Ferguson Township, there's one on a flag pole in the Northland Center.
Oh.
So it'll look like, and in, in the Colonnade, it looks like an extension of the light pole.
I think there's one in front of the other.
Yes, there is. Yep.
Oh, that's single tall pole.
Okay, I just have a question. And I, I apologize because I, I'm very dumb on this stuff, and you may not be able to answer my question, but do these, will these things improve, like, internet service? Is, are they capable of doing that, or is this just strictly phone stuff?
I honestly.
I don't know the answer.
They're, they're in the frequency of, they're not in, I don't believe they're in the internet server.
Yeah, I think they're just wireless.
I believe they're in that range.
Okay, so it's just basically for phones?
I believe, that's the only spectrum that they're, they're allotted to, yes.
Yeah, no, your phone does.
I know, your phone can be a hotspot. I know that. That's why I was asking the question.
Anything from Nigel? Anything?
Nigel, do you have any questions?
I have any questions, thanks.
All right, well, to me, these services, you know, they, they benefit our people.
We actually need something downtown, I believe.
Yeah.
Services allow us to downtown.
Yeah, so, right. So we just want to make sure it's done in a way that's compatible with our community and doesn't, you know, disrupt the historic nature of it. So, don't have a lot of choice, do we?
No.
Do we have a motion in a second?
We do.
Yeah, we do.
Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.[1648.74] And Resolution 22-02, adopting the fees for wireless facilities.
And as I mentioned, all of these fees were set in the state statute, and they're capped, so that's what our fee schedule reflects.
Who's this fall under, zoning or code?
Zoning.
Zoning.
It's the bright green sheet.
So the amendment we just talked about didn't change any of these numbers?
We didn't have any fees for wireless facilities before.
Oh, okay.
So now we're setting the fees.
Oh, okay.
That was a concern of the wireless facility industry.
The right-of-way use, is that per antenna?
WCF.
It says right-of-way use fees per...
WCF.
But, I don't know what that means, is it right-of-way...
Wireless communications facility?
Yeah, for each facility.
Each facility, so, they're only that one, only that one tower is, has to pay a right-of-way fee?
That one, so, for example, if somebody comes in, a company comes in, and they would have put in five of these wireless facilities, they pay $270 per facility for right-of-way use to the township every year.
A facility in the pole?
Yes.
If it's on a right-of-way.
If it's in a right-of-way, yep.
Okay.
And that's an annual fee?
Yep.
As opposed to an application fee?
Yep.
Do they also, or can they put them on private property?
They can.
They would pull a pole on your land?
I think it's one of the modern areas.
The, the one in Ferguson...
Well, it is, yeah.
Yeah.
The one in Ferguson Township on the Northland Center, that flag pole's on the top of the Northland Center.
It's private land, I think private land's different.
I don't know if you have a contract with them or not, you may.
Yeah, this is just for right-of-way, this is just our, what we, our township.
Well, if, if...
Or...
So, if it's on township right-of-way, they pay that much?
Mm-hmm.
So that is, no, I know if it's on private land, the old cell towers, they negotiated a monthly rate, a yearly rate, which was well, well, well over this. We have no negotiation on this.
No, the law sets these fees.
Okay.
I will ask Andy Meyer if that, in case, that is a tower. I notice it's all from, I'm not sure if it's one of these.
I don't know either.
Further discussion?
Do we need a motion?
We do need a motion.
Okay.
I move that we approve Resolution 22-02, setting the fees for wireless communications facilities.
I'll second. Any further discussion on, beyond that?
Nigel has his hand up.
Okay. Nigel?
Yeah, we're going formal way. I'm just curious, though, how, how these, why these fees are the amounts of money they are? What is it for the township, no, what is it for the, what count, responsibility does the country have to deal with this, and, you know, so, why are these fees the way they are?
So, they're this way because that's the way the state negotiated them in the law. So when they sat down, my understanding is the original wireless facilities, when they first started coming in, municipalities had any kind of fee they wanted to have, and some people were getting a decent amount of money every year off of them, and the wireless facilities ordinance, or facilities industry identified that as an impediment to expanding wireless facilities elsewhere in the state. So, they asked that they have, they rein in the fee structure. So this is all brokered by the various local government associations, PML was involved with it, P-Sats was involved with it, and the wireless industry as well as the state to get this law passed. So, basically, it's our time, Todd's time to review these permits, is what's in it, and then the usage of our public right-of-way is something that we, we're allowed to charge for that usage.
Okay, but, so these fees are basically designated before we even started with the scheduling?
Yeah, they're in the law itself, yep.
Okay, thank you.
These fees aren't shared with anybody, they come directly to us.
Yes.
Anything further? Okay. All those in favor of approving Resolution 22-02, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Alright, passed. We'll wrap up at the point where we recess.
Alright.
Could we just continue with the rest of the agenda?
Yeah, I, I, everybody sign off and have to sign back on again.
No, no, they don't have to, okay, they don't have to sign off, we'll go into the conference room, this usually takes you five or 10 minutes, and then we'll come back.
Okay.
And then Nigel's the only one who has to sign off, because Nigel, yeah, he's gonna...
Well, just, when, what, how can Nigel become part of this conversation?
I'm gonna call him on his, on my phone.
Okay.
So, we're gonna briefly adjourn to executive session to discuss some personnel matters, we will be back in probably five, 10 minutes. Nigel, log off now, please.
So we need our annual appointments positions stipulated by code or ordinance. First one is Secretary Treasurer. Treasurer's bond is going to set to $1 million.
We made a motion to appoint Amy Farkas to serve as Secretary Treasurer. Harris Township for 2022, setting his treasurer bond at 1 million.
Need a second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay.
Aye.
Okay. Assistant Secretary Treasurer. Supervisor Harden served last year.
Well, Amy, now, my understanding, I'm going to get this right. I'm vice chair this year, which I could still do it if I, if so, but I'll be chair next year and I won't be able to. So if somebody wants to do that this year and do the transition so we don't have to mess with it next year, I have a problem with that.
I'll do it.
You want to do it, we have to get your bonded.
Yeah, yeah. I was going to ask you about the bonding.
That's fine.
Did they catch you any bonding issues?
No, no, I just signed, I just signed the checks when Amy sent me a text.
You didn't, you didn't extraordinary thing?
I don't think so.
No.
I'm still broke, so I don't think so.
Okay, I need a motion to appoint Supervisor Haymeister as Assistant Secretary Treasurer and adopt Resolution 22.
Move to appoint Assistant Secretary Treasurer Supervisor Haymeister and adopt Resolution 2203.
Need a second.
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Okay. Okay, professional appointments, Township Engineer.
So there's no change from this year. We'll keep college township, Jerry Northridge, and then also Don Franzen is our, we call him emeritus, our emeritus engineer when we need him on special projects. And then our alternate engineer is Stahl Schaefer Engineering, and they actually did some survey work for us last year, and then McCormick Taylor is our traffic engineer.
I'll move that motion as simply stated here.
I'll second it, and what would the special project be with, Mr. Franzen?
We need you park.
Oh, okay.
What does that mean? Are they, who's doing the, doing the work on the culvert situation?
Larson Design Group.
From Pidat, yeah.
No, no, we, we hired them.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Any discussion on this one? Anyway, okay. I'll favor those three simultaneous motions, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Thank you. Sewage Enforcement Officer.
Mary Kay Lupton would like to continue on as our sewage enforcement officer. Stan Wallace would like to continue as our alternate sewage enforcement officer. His rate schedule follows hers, falls under hers as the alternate.
Move to appoint Mary, Ms. Mary Kay Lupton and Mr. Stan Wallace to serve as Harris Township Sewer Enforcement Officers for 2022.
Need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Passes. Township Solicitor.
Mr. Patrick Finelli in the law firm of Finelli Willett will, would like to continue on as our solicitor for 2022, and Ronald McLaughlin in the law firm of Stover McLaughlin would serve as our alternate solicitors.
Danny, it's your turn.
Motion.
All right.
Seven.
Okay, moved and seconded. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Zoning Hearing Board Solicitor and Alternate.
So this one's just a tiny change. Scott Eder and the Eder Law Firm would stay as our zoning hearing board solicitor, and then in the past, we had Dick Campbell and then David Gaines from Miller, Kissler, and Campbell as the alternate. Dick Campbell's phasing out his municipal work, so we would just appoint David Gaines and the law firm of Miller, Kissler, and Campbell as our alternate.
Motion. Second.
Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes. Act 511 Tax Collector.
Move to appoint Senate Tax Agency as Act 511 Tax Collector, Collector for 2021.
I'll second that.
Oh, oh, oh.
I'm sorry, 22.
Says 20, yeah, I thought, I said 21. I'm talking about, talking about reading the monitor. End of message, you know.
Okay. All right, we have a motion to appoint the Senate County Tax Collector for 2022. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Annual COG and Related Committee Appointees. I'll go down the list, and Amy will fill in for us because she keeps good notes.
Okay.
Executive.
Bruce. Chairman Lord.
Finance.
Supervisor Graham.
Human Resources.
Supervisor Wilson.
Parks Capital.
Chairman Lord.
Public Safety.
Vice Chairman Harden.
Facilities.
Vice Chairman Harden.
Climate Action and Sustainability.
Supervisor Graham.
Land Use and Community Infrastructure Committee.
Supervisor Haymeister.
Parks and Recreation Special, Governance Special Committee.
Chairman Lord.
Is that being operated as an ad hoc for?
Yes.
It, it, it sunshines out in a year or something, or what do you?
At some point it will, as soon as they're done working.
Have they met already?
No.
And then add CCMPO.
Okay, and the Center County Metropolitan Planning Organization.
Vice Chairman Harden.
Okay, and COG Executive Director is interested in how we do our, our replacements or substitutes, and our practice has been to do it in an ad hoc basis rather than appointing somebody.
Right.
And a substitute that is a supervisor can vote their will, and the absence of a supervisor substituting, the manager can vote, but only as directed by the person she's replacing.
Yep.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the committee appointments for 2022?
Um, do you, do you want to do the next?
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, Supreme Creek Watershed Commission.
Bob Igoe.
Heritage Museum of Harris Township.
Supervisor Graham, if he wants to continue on.
I will.
Center Area Cable Consortium.
Um, that has to be Supervisor Graham because he's technically the secretary, which makes me the secretary.
He's never going to meet again.
Hopefully not.
Okay.
Do we need to do the solar power one?
No. It was not on the list from the COG.
Okay, is that the totality of it?
Yep.
Okay, I need a motion to appoint these members and to notify the executive director of our policy.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Thank you. Other municipal appointments and reappointments, the vacancy board.
Mr. Rittenhouse has agreed to continue to serve as our vacancy board chair. As a reminder, the vacancy board only meets if it's like a perfect storm. We lose a member of the Board of Supervisors, the continuing Board of Supervisors can't agree on somebody, and this person steps on and becomes the tie-breaking vote. And in all the years, we've never had to do that.
Okay.
Okay.
I move to, I move to reappoint Mr. Paul Rittenhouse to serve as a vacancy board chairman for 2022, with the term ending on December 31st, 2022.
Need a second.
Second.
Okay, hearing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Planning Commission.
So we have one regular position and one alternate position open. Jackie Shutter currently holds the regular position, and she'd like to be reappointed to serve another full term, and then you talked to Mr. Chuck Rizzio earlier this evening about filling the alternate position.
I move the motion for those two.
Second.
Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Zoning Hearing Board.
So Tom Miller is stepping down from the zoning hearing board. You heard from Mr. Emel and Mr. Geis this evening, who are interested in filling that vacancy.
I move to appoint, I move to appoint Mike Emel to the zoning hearing board to a three-year term ending December 31st, 2024.
I'll second that.
Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. And I'll add that let's find something for a JP to do.
We will.
Okay, I know. Borough Water Authority.
I move to appoint Michael Smith to serve as Harris Township's liaison to state cause Borough Water Authority.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. CNET Representative. Mr. Bill Speakman.
I move to appoint Bill Speakman to serve as Harris Township's CNET Representative.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee.
So Eve Rhodes and Diane Ishler would like to be reconsidered for reappointment, and Rebecca DePodwin would like to be appointed to the committee.
Motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, hearing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. CCMPO Technical Committee.
Mr. Harrigan would like to continue.
Motion.
This was, we discuss this, he can do this.
Yes, he can, yep.
Second.
Okay.
Okay. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. SLO Center Region Library Board.
Susan Traynor and Dr. Devonish are interested in serving on the SLO Center Region Library Board as our rep.
I make a motion that we appoint Susan Traynor to the three-year term on the SLO Center Region Library Board ending December 31st, 2024.
Second.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any comments there? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next up, Center County Tax Collection Committee.
Um, I'm your rep to the Center County Tax Collection Committee, and Dwyane is the alternate.
Okay.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. We have our meeting scheduled on page nine of the agenda.
I double-checked to make sure it didn't disagree with any holidays. We had that problem in the past.
Yep, okay.
I don't like that June 13th date.
Why?
Just, I don't like it.
Does it birthday?
Don't celebrate it.
We're doing so well. Okay.
So.
Is it Tuesday?
I move to appoint the meeting schedule as proposed.
They're, they're all second Tuesday, right?
Second Monday, yes.
And we'll have cake on January 13th?
Yes, we will, and, and I get to spend Valentine's Day with my five Valentines.
February 14th.
Don't tell your wives.
The cake is provided by the divorcee whether they sell.
Well, guess what?
Okay, do we have a second to that?
Yeah, second.
All those in favor approving the meeting schedule, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Appointment of Delegate to the State Convention of Piceats.
Does anybody want to go to Piceats?
I had a discussion with the College Township, they're talking about that noon with respect to whether Adam is interested in going, so I think we need to zero that in with.
You can stay in your own room. We can afford that.
It's a COVID issue.
But no, he's like that room with Adam, but something's going on here.
It's a COVID issue for both of us, and it is for me, so I think, I'm waiting to go, but we're going to invite this out and see what numbers come out.
So do you want to be appointed as the delegate?
Yeah.
And then I can always cancel, I can register you and always cancel it.
And here's, here's the packet.
Yeah, I have the thing to do that, I have it already.
Well, you can take it, I don't want it. Okay.
So I make a motion that we appoint Supervisor Haymeister as a member attending the Piceats Convention as Harris Township's delegate for 2022.
They didn't have the meeting last year, so I suspect they're crunched to do something.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Our motion and a second.
There's actually no meeting at all.
They had one in the fall, they had a dinner.
They had one, they had dinner, but they have, they've done things, they don't do anything, nothing.
Nothing virtual.
Okay, hearing no discussion pertinent to the motion. May all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Question? Question?
Yes, sir.
Why don't we do, why, why don't we do PML at the same time?
Because PML sends us a separate mailing out before the annual summit.
All right, just checking.
Just a second, complete this, all those opposed, say nay. Thank you, motion passes.
Oh, sorry.
Resolution 22-04, setting the fee schedule.
Yep.
Okay.
And we gave you, we highlighted in yellow things that changed. There were some code things that changed. I also went through and realized that our right to know request stuff was out of date with the law, so I updated that to be based on the law, and then the sewage enforcement officer had some changes to her fee schedule.
So the long listing on page four, are DEP determined?
No, that's, no, that's determined by the sewage enforcement officer.
Okay. Okay, so, so that's her, okay, so everything on here is, you only want, code went up, is that?
Yes.
Was that a?
That was a COG decision.
That was in the budget.
I know it was in the budget, but I don't, I want to, never mind.
Well, that's, is that your committee, Frank?
It is now.
That's your challenge.
I recall there having been a discussion about the need to maintain, you know, maintain a balance, and we had asked for kind of a perspective on how it's going to look the next couple of years, not just fly-by-to-see the past, but we're pretty low relative to other communities.
Did they go like from 20 cents to 25 cents a copy, or what kind of big reach?
Um, it went from, first of all, nobody gets copies, everybody wants it, I get, we get right-to-know requests all the time from people that are just commercial entities, and they want everything emailed, which is still free. So the copies, I think, went from 10 cents to 25 cents.
Okay.
Okay.
We need a motion on that.
Yes, you do.
Okay, move to adopt Resolution 2204, setting the fee schedule for Harris Township.
Second.
Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Managers Report.
So I just have a couple of things. First of all, our newest employee started today. We said goodbye to Mr. Dave Ackerman after 27 years of service to the township on December 30th. We sent him out with an appropriate way to go out around here, it's kind of a tradition we have, so we took care of him on the 30th. And then Mr. Casey Wyatt joined us this morning. Casey is a member of the Bollesburg Fire Company. He grew up in Bollesburg, he grew up in Brookside. We think he's going to be a great addition to our crew. So we're happy to have him joining us, and if residents see him out and about when he's plowing snow later this winter, feel free to give him a wave and say hello to him. And then my other thing is, we're making some changes to our operations with the uptick in the virus. We have posted on the door to the township building that you must wear a mask now to come in here. We will try to accommodate people that are not comfortable wearing a mask through either our drop box or outside in the parking lot. We'll try to be as accommodating as we can, but we're trying to keep our staff safe. We will be requiring masks at all of our public meetings. Our public meetings are all basically hybrid as well, so we'll be switching probably to more heavy on the hybrid side and less heavy on the people coming into the building, just to, again, keep ourselves safe through this uptick. And I just wanted to point out, if anybody needs to get a test in Center County, the Center County testing location, I think, recently moved, so we will post that in.
Tomorrow's the first day.
I'm sorry?
Tomorrow's the first day at the new site.
Yeah, and the new site is?
The recyc, the recycling reference facility.
Yes.
On transfer.
So, yeah, so if you need a test, you can go out there.
It's expected to be busy because they're, they were running 70-plus people at the old site, and they're expecting upwards of 200, so there might be traffic delays.
So one other thing I'd just like to bring up in relation to the virus, we had a COVID leave that we extended to our employees all through all of last year, that if they had to be off because they had to quarantine or they were isolated from the, because they tested positive, they did that basically without having to use their sick time. That leave extended at the, ended at the end of December. I would like to extend that through the end of June if the board is okay, just because with everything that's going on right now, I want to make sure that we're prudent.
Motion.
Motion.
Well, question, question before, before we make a motion, let's make a proper motion. I think that, you know, instead of every couple months extending that, I think we ought to just say that that is a policy we want to always have when COVID is involved. So if COVID, and that should be Amy, if COVID moves up or down, then, then we, it just automatically happens.
I don't know what that is, but somebody get that off my paper.
What is it?
It could be, fuck.
Is it, what's it called?
It was a bug. It was a bug.
Okay.
You didn't need bugs.
Take your paper back.
I hope that's not a metaphor for the rest of this year.
But instead of, you know, trying to extend that to, for a finite time, let's just let it go at, you know, if the uptick is going on, and if you make it, you do this, then it kicks in. In other words, if it's COVID-related, let's just let it, let it go always.
And that's the discretion of the manager.
Right, exactly, as long as it's a COVID-associated, then we'll let it go. If it gets out of control, then we'll revisit it, but I think at this point, it's not out of control, and it's a good thing to do for our employees, so I think we just make the motion that let it up to Amy and do it as we, as necessary.
I'd like to see that amended to say, until we decide to rescind it.
Okay, until we decide, until we decide to rescind it.
What guidelines do we use, though? I mean, C or?
Well, I think, I think the, no, I think it's the local emergency management that she's using now. Sean talked to her about this one.
They come from the state, right?
From the state, put your mask up.
So basically, what we're looking is the state.
It's from the state and from the CDC.
Yeah, as long as it's something that everybody else, it's COVID-related, let's just let it happen.
We've continuously followed, since this all started in 2020, we've followed the CDC guidance for everything. So we will update, tomorrow, update our policy on what you have to do if you're exposed or if you are testing positive, so... My concern is, I just want to make sure that folks aren't trying to come to work thinking because they don't have enough sick time, they need to come to work because they want to be paid.
I think that's what we want, I think that's what we want. So I don't know what the, and like, I think what Bruce added is appropriate, so that's my motion, however that gets written out.
So extending it, and then, to be used at the discretion of the manager, subject to being repealed by the board of supervisors.
And you can just give us a month and update if you want to, or what's going on, I don't know, no big deal.
Do we have a second for?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Good.
Okay.
What initial item? Status of the pole building removal?
Donnie was, he had talked to someone about it, he was supposed to get the number from that person before the holiday, and I've not heard that he got that number back yet. We're working on it.
We went through a very nice fall/winter period, and that whole thing could have been cleared up.
Well, we want to know.
No snow plowing.
Yes.
And it's becoming frustrating to see the stuff sitting around the building that could be taken care of.
We're working on it.
Well, keep working on it. I'd get a big dumpster out there.
I can have it down tomorrow.
No, don't.
That was a laugh.
I was being quiet.
Don't, both of you, just, I'm watching you. That's why bugs are falling on me. Okay, anything, any other questions for me?
No, I just wanted to make a comment on the Village Parking Committee. I think it's going very well, and I think we finally got a good chairman, and I think everything will get, resolve itself as time goes on.
May I, on a, number six. Submit any questions to Amy ahead of time? If they want to, Amy, we might discuss with the various boards.
Oh, yeah, that's actually a good suggestion.
So is a question.
Well, if we don't want, I'd rather not come in here and make a suggestion than they say, duh, if we have a suggestion, we need, that we want them to act on, get it to Amy ahead of time, so they can have some reaction to it.
When we set their work plans.
What they, what they?
January 26th, and it'll be at 7:00.
No, 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 what day do they meet next to discuss our questions? What do you need to have?
Well, the Planning Commission meets the 10th, the Parks and Rec Committee meets the 19th, and the Shade Tree Commission meets the 13th. So if there's any specific questions, I'll email you guys tomorrow, but if there's any specific questions and you want to get them to me, I'll email you those deadlines ahead of time.
Suggest what they should be studying, what they should be studying this next.
Right, exactly, I know what you're saying, but yes, I see what you're saying, but yes, if we get them to them by those dates, then Amy can get that to the meeting too.
What's the status for our meeting with the, I think, any more update on meetings with Spring Township?
So I talked with, oh yeah, you weren't here yet when I mentioned this. So I talked with PennDOT earlier about this, had a conference call with them, and then I emailed Spring Township and Potter Township today. Spring Township gave me some dates in January, because PennDOT would like to do this sooner rather than later, so they gave me some dates, and their manager and one of their elected officials will go. The Secretary and Potter Township was gonna talk with her board tonight, and I gave her the dates that worked for Spring Township, but I took off one or two that didn't work for me. And then I believe you and Supervisor Harden want to go.
Oh, I, I didn't want to go.
Yeah, and we're, yeah, we're looking at, it's not gonna be, you know, it's not gonna have a quorum of any of the elected officials, there will be no decisions made, but the whole idea is to brainstorm some possible solutions for the road.
I'd like to have an update from that too.
And they will have an update, and they, they have given me some information on that, so.
It's our password.
What?
What's our password?
Harris Wi-Fi.
Capital.
I think so, I don't know, it's standing behind, it's on the piece of paper behind Matt.
Capital H Harris Wi-Fi, and the W and F Wi-Fi are also capitals.
Okay.
Okay.
Where's Jenny at, I don't see her on there.
She's in Australia.
Oh, she's in Australia, huh?
She's 16 hours ahead of us.
Are we done with manager then?
I think so.
Okay, so yes, I need a motion to approve vouchers.
I'll make, I'll make the motion that we approve voucher number 2021-12 for $326,731.78. And I did see in there that our first payment on the building was done this month, is that correct?
Yes.
Is that what I read?
Our loan payment, yep.
Yep, okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you. Okay, Executive Committee reports.
The Executive Committee went through this elaborate planning process built around the funding for the park, and because of the action of Ferguson Township and option two and three discussion, the general forum was canceled. Then we got the funding project going.
Well, there's still a motion on the floor. Do we do that when we meet again, or is that, that motion been withdrawn?
I'm sorry, I thought we did that.
What was the motion?
I think Bruce made the motion that we vote on that.
We, we had the...
Option three or option two?
Oh, you're talking, you're talking about what he just said about...
Yes, yes.
All right, never mind, okay.
Well, does that motion get withdrawn, or how, means it go away, or we forget about it, or what? It's a muted thing, but at the same time, it is a motion on the floor, that we vote on that the next general forum meeting, so what, I'm curious how we're gonna handle that.
Good question. Don't have an answer to that one.
Bruce, that's your problem.
You lost me, where are we?
He brought up the point of the cancellation of the general forum because of the previous action of Executive Committee to look at option two and three, and the proposal from Ferguson Township to do three, which killed two and negated having a general forum made because the action had been taken care of.
And so, we had a motion to, I'm still a little slow here, we had a motion to do what?
Well, the motion is still in there to vote on it, and it's supposed to come up at our next general forum meeting. But, how are we gonna handle that?
I think, I think what Bud's trying to say is, we kind of agreed that we wanted that to come before the general forum, so there would be a public vote, so we could see who was for and against it. And I don't think, that's the question, since that...
Well, I can, I could certainly suggest that go on the agenda for the next meeting.
No, I would think we should, you should discuss it anyhow.
Okay, okay, good, thank you.
Public Service had a really nice discussion, we started with the sewer on Callaway, is a study of a major sewer improvement running in the full length of Callaway. It's gonna be a, I think, a two or three-year project, it'll be starting soon. We also talked about a sewer extension on Meeks Lane Pump Station. Then shifted over to utility-scale solar, a fine presentation that Pam Adams and Mark did. I think they may have done to Sustainability Committee too?
Go ahead, I was dreaming here, but...
The, the...
Something went wrong, please try again.
The utility-scale solar that Pam and Mark have been working on, did they make that presentation to Sustainability?
No, you mean, you mean the, for, not, not, no, we've had no presentation.
Okay, that'll be coming then, so.
There's two, there's two involved here, right?
Yeah.
There's one for the, one for municipal and one for you, everybody else.
Yeah.
Okay, not her for me, the one.
And then we had an overview of the new Lucy Committee. That was, those are, but the solar project PowerPoint they did is a really fine, fine presentation, together with the printed book, that the climate change book, nice publication. So far, I think we'll get a preliminary document from the Green Mountain Energy Company in February.
That's who we hired to develop an RFQ.
Yep.
RP.
Yep. That's it, Bruce.
Okay, thank you. Human Resources, Nigel.
I did, did an RP.
Okay. Finance Committee.
We did not meet, but I want to make a little bit of a minor discussion here. On the management report number one. We started at their last finance committee meeting in, when we voted on the budget December, and I brought the fact that there are $350,000, $365,000 worth of studies, that I suggested if the studies weren't done, we'd be billed for them, so Amy drug Joe.
I did not drag them. I invited them.
We had a very good discussion, they pulled, cut them off the table, they're taking some of that money from other directions, so we will not be billed for that, but the COG won't be paying for it. Some of it's coming from our health reimbursement plan, some of it from, from the fire?
Fire capital.
Fire capital. So then, if that happens, nothing will happen until we actually, there'll be no money spent in any of those. The only thing we will discuss is the $80,000, $70,000 for the climate action, and they're apparently working on something, something to spend that money on, so we got, we were very successful. They pulled two from the, two from the table, and, and they suggested we wait on the third, so, not that we're gonna handle it yet, they didn't come back yet on that one.
They have not.
Good job, Bud.
Finance, Climate Action and Sustainability Committee.
We haven't met for quite a while, since, the last time we met was before we decided forward at the general forum, the general forum voted on it, so we haven't met since then. They, I guess they're working on this proposal, I haven't seen it, I don't know what it is. I guess I'll, before I make any comments, we decide what this proposal is, and we spend $80,000 on it to implement this plan, which is, which is, well, it'll be open for discussion, let's say there. It was a good plan, the only thing is that it sort of mirrored the state, except I think our estimates of climate load is a little higher than what the state says ours is, but that's regardless, that doesn't matter, so, that's it.
Question on the climate action?
Yes.
Or whatever. One of the things that we talked about when we talked about the 537 plan in the combined committees, and one of the things I brought up, that I firmly believe we need to take a look from a regional standpoint of the sewer service and the growth boundary. I think sewer service is more environmentally friendly than septic tanks, and pretty much what we say is that if you're outside the growth boundary, we don't care if you're environmentally friendly. That's pretty much what the policy says. I said in that, in that committee that climate action and sustainability, this is directly to the environment, should look at that and decide whether, or bring something to the general forum, or something to us that says this is something we should do or shouldn't do. But I think they need to look at that to see if sewer service outside the growth boundary is good or a bad one, but I think that needs to start in the Climate Action Committee, and I think that's something that I'd like to see brought up in that committee.
We have an example. We have two examples in there, Township, within a year, across the street issue.
Right, exactly, and that's what I'm saying, I think that needs to be, the climate action needs to take that and bring that up and have a discussion on it, and get it before the general forum, because I just think that that's archaic, to have those two things tied together in perpetuity, so to speak. So I'd like to see the climate action take that up.
That has to come through Planning anyhow, so that would make sense.
Well, it would be...
Well, they can, these guys, but I think climate action, because it is, it is an environmental issue.
And it's a lucia issue too, with both of us.
Mm-hmm. Well, it doesn't pertain to our climate action plan, but it probably, well, here's, while we're discussing this, I'm really not clear where this Climate Action Committee fits into this program, but it's not a COG program. It is, it was started under, in the Planning Department, and they, it got started there, and I don't know if it started through the, through Saw Waste, or how Pam got drew into this.
Started through the addition of environment to public service.
Public service.
Public Service and Environment Committee. It was the environmental component of that committee.
And that is part, that's under, that is under what COG program?
It's its own, it's its own committee now.
Well, but, but you can't have a committee without a COG program. That's, that's, I guess, that's where I'm confused, we have COG committees, I don't know, this is, this is, I think we're headed a little slippery slope here. We appoint a committee, and it's a very good committee, it's necessary, but it's not tied to any COG program. So what, so where, how does that fit into the COG? Does it fit in as a, where, I don't know. That has two ramifications, number one, financing, if it's not a COG program, who pays for it? Right now, it's gonna come through planning. Now, is that appropriate or not? I don't know that. So it kind of, it kind of bothers me a little bit, I mean, I'm on a committee because I, various reasons I'm on a committee, it needs to be discussed, needs to be, something needs to be done, but we have to be careful, we're going in a slippery slope with a COG here. For instance, our administration, we discussed this with Joe and Eric, we are on the library, we're on the pools or anything else, because it's advantage to us to do that, it saves us money. The administration, if it gets so high, all of a sudden, the administration is killing us, we might as well do our own library, we might as well do our own. That type of thing we need to look at, that's just, since it's the first year, I guess I'm bringing it up. So when Frank noted this, now here's, here's, here is the environmental sewer service area, how does that fit into this climate action? You're gonna add that climate action, but climate action isn't a committee, isn't a COG program. So we need to look at that, that's all. I don't have any answer for it, I'm just bloating here.
Thank you for your state of confusion.
Yes. So you can think about that.
This is Executive Committee stuff too, so.
I think so, that Finance Committee. In terms of where does it belong?
Well, yeah, I mean, okay, for instance, Climate Action Committee, who is, what municipality is involved in that? The planning, that means, that means half-moon is part of planning, are they automatically a part of this committee? Ferguson Township has their own climate action, they're spending a lot of money on their own climate action, does that mean they have to do double duty? We have, I don't know that.
Well, see, I, when this one, the thing that, what Bud's saying, was we had Public Service and Environmental Committee, which took, came out of services and the environment, it was there. Well, here came this juggernaut, for lack of a better term, that basically usurped that committee, with the exception of one or two things, and we combined it into, into the Lucy Committee. So I think what Bud's saying is, this thing just kind of got a life of its own and went somewhere, now what do we do with it? You know, what are we supporting? What company is, I mean, technically, the COG cannot pass ordinances, that's, that's our job. The COG is there to give us support, and that's, that's why I think what Bud's trying to say is, how do we, how do we do that? How do we make sure our committees are supporting us and not trying to drive us?
We have, our COG allows us to do cafeteria style, and that's what's a great part of it. If you don't feel like you need to, so where are we going on this? I, I guess it's gonna be, I don't know how it's gonna work out.
Well, I think it's, now's a good time to bring it up, because we've just passed the budget, so we don't have to, we don't have to do something today.
No, we don't, that's why we...
But we start the conversation, I think that's a great idea. Let's try to kind of, try to formulate a little bit of a position paper, something that just says, here's, here's what we're thinking, and circulate it so we can see reactions from other people, just, you know, just, what do you guys think about this? How do we, how do we formalize these kinds of things, rather than just let them happen ad hoc?
And also, I've noticed that whenever other municipalities do something, they automatically feel the rest of us should just jump in on it, and we are not quite, we're maybe outlanders in that certain respect, but you're right, okay, think about it.
Good. Heritage Museum's still up?
Heritage Museum's closed.
Heritage Museum?
Oh, closed. I'm hoping after night we may have a... Um, I, I'm hoping after night we may have another fundraiser with this, I'll discuss with them. Uh, we are closed, probably till April or something like this, we had a great, uh, a great send-off. We had a, I don't know, I guess it was arts exhibition, and, and a little bit of a silent auction-type thing, made a few hundred dollars. We've got a lot of, several new people coming on board. Uh, want to give a shot to Stan Smith, who's really become interested in our, in our, in our board and restoring all the stuff, the older stuff that we have in there. And, uh, Dr. and Mrs. Nydigger, done a fantastic job. Heather Ricker is on there, there's three other people on the board that really, uh, I, I, we're, we're, everybody's interested, let's see what happens.
Stan has his own bar and fold.
He does have a bar, he does have his bar.
Much larger, much bigger than I would have thought.
That's my report on that.
I got it. Frank?
Okay, uh, well, land use, we already talked about, MPO didn't meet since our last meeting, facilities didn't meet since our last meeting, and appelle, we're, we're talking with PennDOT here on that, so we all kind of know where we're at. We all have all the information that we have, so that's all I have on those three.
All right. Um, Public Safety did not meet. Parks Capital did not meet. Park Authority did meet. Um, Park Authority, there was, there was a clause in our contract that stated that a, if someone pulled out of the bidding process, they could not be a subcontractor to somebody else. And we had a person, we had a group that pulled out, that, um, is a major supplier of, of materials to other contractors in the region. The COG solicitor reviewed this and said we'd be fine waiving that part of the contract. He said actually, he probably, he thought we didn't need to waive it, but just to be clear and upfront, we could or should waive it. So we did that, we then put things out for bid, we bid about $5 million worth of,
Oh.
Put out about $5 million worth of bids out. The park is moving forward, I don't know when it's going to break ground, but it's going to happen. Um, there's sufficient monies in there for some contingencies. There's a few things that are left undone that will need to be done. Uh, there is no artificial turf at this time, but it is definitely moving forward. The one other thing I'll mention is the Center Region Parks and Recreation Authority Endowment Fund, the Milbrook Marsh Nature Center received a monetary gift in the amount of $537,718, from a major donor. Um, the 37,000, $500,000 of that is going to go into a fund which may not be, um, which they may, they may not withdraw the principal from. So it's going to be a permanent endowment.
What can that be used for, you know, various financials, they use it for studies and all that?
They can use it for, they can use it for operating monies.
Not, not, not a study, it's not a study operating money?
They, it, it's fairly open, but they have to, they have to bring in financing for their own operations. And this, so they have to go out for grants and stuff like this, this cuts into that burden majorly. It's a major endowment. In addition, because they have a half a million dollar endowment, that leads, that, that's a lead endowment, which will enable them to go out and solicit more monies for an endowment fund. The $37,000 will go into an endowment which is spendable, which means they may spend a percentage, they may withdraw a percentage of the principal as needed. Um, and there are some limitations in how much they could do it, I don't have the, um, the, the exact amounts here, but it's, so it's, let's see. Uh, yeah, they, they can, they can, they can draw that down over time, so if they have an emergency need, they can, they can dip into that. But still, that's, that's a major endowment, um, a half a million dollars into a, into a non, into an endowment that cannot be spent down.
Yeah, that, that must be a gem over there. It must be rare.
That's a, that's a long, that's a long-time supporter who has endowed monies previously, but this new one is on another order of magnitude. That's all that I have to report.
They, oh, okay, never mind, okay, there's a lot, a lot to be said for that, good, good.
Yeah, good, best thing to say about it.
I move we adjourn.
Is ground expected to be broken in the education building this year?
I am not sure about that.
I'll second that motion to adjourn.
Oh, there he is.
There he goes.
Hey, still there.
All those in favor, say goodnight, Nigel.
Say goodnight, Nigel.
I, I can see all of you pretty clearly.
Good night, Nigel.
You're kind of fuzzy, we haven't seen you for a while.
I'll, I'll arrange to come in and sign.
Yeah, we'll work, we'll work that out.
Somebody bring it out to my car, whatever.
Yeah, we'll work that out. All right, thank you.
Night, Nigel.
Okay, we're logging off.
All right, we're done.
We're done.
We're done?